I will call this meeting to order. The committee is a hold, December 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 AM. Can I have a roll call, please? Boig.
Here.
Stubby.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Naper.
Here.
Criswell.
Here.
Storson.
Here.
And I'll sit here. We do not have any virtual attendees. Do not have any public comments, right? Can I have number four, approval minutes from November 4th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 4th, committee of the whole meeting.
I'll second that. Motion by Victoria, second by Terry, all on paper say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto number five, which is the mayoral proclamation for Farmers and Merchants Bank's 85th anniversary. I went down there this morning to present them their plaque, and I'll just read it quick. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of the city of Rowan, it is the pleasure of the city of Rowan's town and council and mayor to offer this proclamation to help celebrate and recognize 85 years of Farmers and Merchants Bank. And whereas Farmers and Merchants Bank was founded by Harry Kiawa in 1940. And whereas, three generations later, the family continues to serve the Rowan community by getting to know those they serve and their needs. And whereas, Farmers and Merchants Bank has supported the Rowan community in countless ways for more than eight decades, including sponsoring local events and projects, volunteering, and providing a means for family to follow their dreams. And whereas, the reputation earned by family and staff is one of a helpful and pleasant atmosphere with friendly service. And whereas, it is recognized that the solid business of this caliber is of great importance to the community and sincerely appreciated. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council and mayor of the city of Rowan hereby offer this proclamation to be entered as a permanent record in the archives of the city of Rowan in honor of the 85th anniversary of Farmers and Merchants Bank. Due to today. We'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for the Farmers and Merchants Bank 85th anniversary.
I'll second.
Motion by Terry, second by Sam, all on paper say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six is review proposals for municipal court attorney services. So we will have the interviews with two. We have Dreski in our office and...
Wordslaw Office.
Words, that is, we have more to, huh?
Yeah.
And Wordslaw Office. We kind of talked before, would you guys, do you want to stay in the room, do you want to...
I'll step out.
Okay.
You can go first, it does not matter.
Let's just, Dreski, you're on the first, so we'll go with you first. Right across the hall, there's a conference room, if you wanted to step up, right? And then Luke can grab you when he's done.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke, you want to step up to the podium, please? Mr. Dreski, sorry. Attorney Dreski.
Please don't.
Let me get all my papers. So, you guys all have papers in front of you, do you want to take turns asking, or are you guys okay if I just ask the questions?
You can ask.
You can.
No, no, no. Get all this stuff.
Your attorney is really going to enjoy this, because this might be the only time you can cross things, Sam.
I know. Okay. All right, please introduce yourself.
So, Luke Dreski, born and raised here in Rowan, graduated from the class of 2017. I previously served on this council for about two and a half years, and then ended up moving over to the city of Ripon, where my wife and I now reside. We've owned our home there just over a year and a month. I graduated from University of Wisconsin Law School in May of 2025, was admitted to the state bar. May 29th, I believe, of 2025, began my practice as Dreski Law Office. And on June 2nd, I believe, is when I kind of started marking myself out for clients. I worked basically on a lot of issues, from real estate property. I have dived into municipal issues, there's a lot of zoning and stuff that's involved. I have, I do not have any municipal clients as of now. But I have interviewed for all five, did an interview just for a municipal position, and an interview for one prior in a village near Green Bay. But I worked as an intern for attorney Steve Storson, which I believe I noted in my letter, who serves for the city of Rylanders, city of Wopacka, city of Holstein. And he's also someone who I would say is my de facto mentor when it comes to practicing law. He's got many years of experience, I've worked in his building in Ripon, I have an office space there in the campus. Room that I utilize, where he is just a walk down the hallway to answer questions. And he's well known for training many attorneys in the area, I believe. I'm probably attorney 40 or 41, one that he's trained, many who have practiced in Rowan or have offices in Rowan. So that's a little bit about me. First, I'm just thankful for having been considered, work in my hometown of Rowan. Just as my community roots still, I have families here and stuff. I wish I was still in the Rowan, however, if that was the case, I probably would be on the council, not submit a bid today. So, you know, some benefit to that as well.
Great, thank you. Next question is, can you describe your experience in municipal law and how it applies to this position?
So, yeah, I kind of asked that a little bit, so I haven't specifically worked in municipal court level. I have dealt with municipal level charges. So there's been some traffic charges that I've dealt with, but none of them have been through municipal court, but they've been handled at the county level, such as speeding, first charge, OWIs, et cetera. And as I mentioned, I've done other general city governance municipal work, working with attorney Storson. As well as, most recently, in the summer, I helped rewrite part of the zoning code for Grand Island County, I was representing a client who was involved with some dispute with the county and ended up just actually inventing a chapter of the zoning code. So I was actively involved in that process of working through the land use plan and zoning committee there. But on municipal citation parts, but specifically zoning ordinances, I have not had that workload yet. However, I am hoping to, you know, stake my claim here in Rowan to be my first municipal client.
Great. How do you prioritize your caseload and ensure timely resolution of legal matters?
Yeah, really with all legal matters, we're always running on some sort of calendar, whether that's statute of limitations, or whether that's pending court cases that are happening, whether that's status hearing or other hearings I might be having at the court level. When it comes to my work and balancing not only my current client caseload, but if I ended up getting this role, this caseload, it's the schedule of municipal court, you know, it's once a month, pre-trial conferences, and ultimately some trials once a month, which on average, trials aren't happening that often. That's actually the nature, not just municipal court, but many municipal courts, a lot of them settle outside or the charges are dismissed. So my, on balancing that, I mean, I operate on a, probably a monthly schedule on, you know, if a citation is submitted in, I will probably review the citations, the pre-trial conferences, which I believe under the proposal, or the initial appearances will be handled by the police department, unless requested, then I of course would try to handle those. Then ultimately, schedule the pre-trial conferences with the defendants if they want them. Ultimately, it's up to defendants if they want to meet with me or the department to try to either plea out, maybe get a lower charge, or just accept the guilty plea. And then work through that to whether, if they do not, accept either some sort of settlement plea or if they don't admit guilt to the charge, then we start trial work. So ultimately, a lot of it is dictated by the defendants in those cases. Every defendant's different, every defendant's going to have a different perspective on the charges they have. So ultimately, when I look at how I balance that with my current caseload, given that probably the city of Rowan would probably be my largest client that I would operate on, I would have to say there probably is a priority there with working for the city of Rowan. Mainly just because municipal clients are not only good work, but it's also work that is needed. And frankly, it's work that I know I can deliver on a timely basis. And a lot of that has to also be done with consultation with the police department. Sometimes if you schedule for either pre-trial conferences or trials, it can be dictated on police officers' availability to testify as well. So those are all factors that are considered into it, but if I would have managed to get this done and being them to be considered, this would definitely take an equal priority with all my other clients, if not a larger priority, just given the workload and the relationship I have with the city.
Thank you. What is your philosophy in determining when a negotiated settlement is appropriate versus the need to take a violation to trial for prosecution?
There is a few factors to consider. First is the initial citation or complaint that comes out. Is it, you know, is it a speeding charge, that they went five miles per hour over? And are they, you know, someone who's a juvenile, is it the first charge? Are those considerations that we want to make? But also, are they habitual offender who has multiple ordinance violations? Has the police department or city staff dealt with those individuals on a routine basis? Because ultimately, whether you're doomed or were, it's probably a question I'll ask later, but I know there's a concern with municipal prosecution that passes on the cost that lies with it. Is the goal to collect the forfeiture and just, you know, have noted that they, you know, plead out and want to violate it in ordinance? Or is it to make a speaking point that, hey, this is, you know, your fifth, sixth, seventh ordinance violation? We need to, you know, hold you accountable for this. And that's where consultation with the staff and the police department will help guide my decision making on whether to pursue those charges, whether to, you know, plead out or settle with maybe less charges, given what the department recommends. All those would happen in consultation with city staff, specifically the police department. But that would be one that I would want to make single-handedly, depending on the individuals, of course.
So a follow-up to that question, then, you kind of touched on that, does cost recovery for the city play a role in your decisions, then?
It should play somewhat of a role. Is it, you know, is it worth that we go down trial route for a charge that you might recover a $200 forfeiture and then end up paying my fees and other fees that are, you know, maybe we'll recover, maybe we won't through that work? Ultimately, it's up to statute and also up to the municipal judge on recovering some of those fees. But it is something that has to be considered, do you want to spend, you know, X of thousands of dollars just for me to pursue a charge that might have an end or might not have an end? And I know that's been, I'm sure that's happened, when you have attorneys billing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for work, and you're not even quite sure what the business you're getting out of that. So, being as a member, stand those shares, I understand that perspective. So it does weigh on my decision making, but it definitely is not the sole factor.
For a typical speeding violation that is contested, how many hours would you estimate you would need or spend on a settlement or prosecution of such a ticket?
Just in my experience being on the, actually the fence side on a speeding charge, I would expect maybe four or five hours. That's a healthy estimate that I have, now that goes to a trial, I would expect more. But if it ends up being something that, you know, they're talking through pre-trial conferences, we're having calls, they're like, well, I wasn't really speeding, well, officers clocked you going 15 over, so I think you were speeding. You know, those are conversations that will be had. Now, that's my expectation, is like, you know, four or five, six hours in that range. Every defendant that you work with could be different, so there could be defendants that are calling me at all hours of every day, trying to make me drop the charge. There could be defendants that, you know, is contested, but at the end of the day, after you have a pre-trial conference with them, they're like, okay, I will accept the plea. So a lot of that also is geared by the opposing parties and how they are managing the caseload as well.
Can you provide an example of a complex case you worked on and the outcome?
I have one that's kind of currently working on right now, like speak to, I can't speak to the charges specifically, but I've been involved myself in the DA's office a lot, a lot of pre-trial conferences. We have figured out two items that are supposed to occur outside of the courtroom with stipulations that if they do certain things, then prosecutor might end up dismissing charges. So there's a lot of options when it comes to discretion on how you want to handle certain defendants who are charged, whether it's a speeding violation or traffic violations. There are also a lot of opportunities as a prosecutor, where you can give potential options to, like, I appreciate you, you've given the city your time related to your charge. We do believe that there is some wrong here, but at the end of the day, you know, maybe the goal is collecting the forfeiture. So then we lower it down to a, well, common thing is to lower it down to like a speedometer violation. If you own a speedometer, you got to pay a $150 fine instead of having points noted on your record or something like that. That's been, at least in the caseload I can speak to right now, I can't get into any more details. I'll probably share some client information, so. Probably does that give you...
Then do you have any final remarks or any information you wish to share with us or questions for us?
I have a lot of questions for you, but maybe not related to this. No, just to close, as I noted in my intro, it's first an honor again to be in front of the city of Rowan. I wouldn't frankly want to probably work for any other cities if I had the option. Just given my roots in town, and I know one of the things that I note on my proposal is conflicts of interest. And it's old as closure, I have family that lives in town, just like everyone does who's from Rowan. So there's always, is a potential conflict of interest there. But it's a town that I love, one that I've enjoyed my whole life, so I'm invested in it one way or the other, whether maybe in a municipal prosecutor role, maybe that's my way of giving back, or just my support in the community generally. So just, again, it's an honor to be considered, I hope we can maybe figure something out if you end up moving forward with me, I'd be happy to work with the city in a productive way, not only improve the city, but also, you know, my way of trying to give back to the city that, you know, where I am, is allow me to start my law practice in this area.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Dreski that we would also have to ask our other attorney? Anything that needs cleared up or any other questions for him?
I, if there was a conflict of interest, what happens at that point? Like as, if you were the attorney, how is that handled?
I would, I would probably work to find a different counsel to represent in those situations. And really, a lot of attorneys do that for all...
We've currently had to do that. Yeah, oh, okay. It's pretty common, and our current attorney also lives in town, has been here a long time, so it's not uncommon, we're all getting divorced from the other attorney, that he's asked to take over the case somewhere.
And I just hope my family doesn't get any speeding tickets.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreski.
Would you like to refer to Preston?
Yeah, you want to switch for me?
Yep.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Yeah, Luke, are you, are you ready?
I'm ready to go.
All right, we're going to start right off the top here, how much you start with introducing yourself?
Sure. Um, so my name's Preston Words, I'm here representing Wordslaw Office tonight. Wordslaw Office is comprised of two attorneys, it's myself and my dad. My dad is not able to be here tonight, he actually is at a city council meeting for Amro tonight. He's the city attorney for Amro, city attorney of Ripon, and the village of Brandon as well. He was also previously the city attorney in Princeton. I like to kind of say that between the two of us, we have about 45 years of experience, and that my dad has 44 years. About six months. So I'm still learning, obviously, but in addition, I also worked on prosecution matters at the city of Madison through law school on top of my classes. I worked doing kind of exactly what this position would be, which is municipal prosecution, traffic, and municipal violations. And then as well as I hold the position of assistant city attorney now with Ripon, so I also do some of the pre-trials and trials.
Okay. And that kind of rolled into describing your experience in municipal law and how it applies to this position. So if you have anything else to add in that?
Um...
Or you kind of, kind of hit that one with the last question?
Yeah, just that, it was a lot of my experience through law school. And it's been nice to have my dad at the Ripon position too, I can always pass ideas by him, but we kind of even started to split the work up there as well. I handle some of the pre-trials, he handles others, other pre-trials.
Okay, thank you. How do you prioritize your caseload and ensure timely resolution of legal matters?
We prioritize our legal, what was the question, sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, how do you prioritize your caseload to ensure timely resolution of legal matters?
We, like I was kind of saying before, we divide up the work between my dad and I. Everything kind of gets filtered in one way, and then from there, the staff sort of separates it out between my dad and I, and we just work amongst ourselves.
Sure. What is your philosophy in determining when a negotiated settlement is appropriate versus the need to take a violation to trial for prosecution?
I think that definitely depends on talking with other people at the city. We would take our job very seriously, as we do with Ripon right now. We, we make some decisions on our own, but we make sure that the decisions that we're making are definitely informed by, you know, talking with the chief of police. In Ripon, we actually do our pre-trials one day every month. We meet for about two hours, it's, I think it's like the third Thursday of every month. And the chief of police is literally sitting right next to us, so we can kind of review the settlement with him right there. Otherwise, we, we also do some pre-trials just completely by the phone. If we have questions about a settlement, we usually run them past the chief of police.
Okay. And then, kind of leading off of that, and a follow-up question, does cost recovery for the city play a role in your decisions?
Yes, I, I think it definitely does.
For a typical speeding violation that is contested, how many hours would you estimate that you would need to spend on the settlement or prosecution of such a ticket?
I think that, given the experience between my dad and I, obviously there would be one pre-trial, I would say that the pre-trial, if it's obviously contested, and it doesn't seem like the defendant's going to settle at all, and that's not going to take very long. And then we also have, I got from my job in Madison, as well as in Ripon, I have kind of set templates of questions to ask during the trial. So putting together, the templates takes maybe another hour, two hours, and then the trial can be about an hour as well. So that comes to maybe three, four hours.
Okay. I'm just glad you didn't say six, seven? Okay, can you provide an example of a complex case you worked on and the outcome?
Sure. I'm going to go back to my days in law school, actually, this was not that long ago. But over the summer of 2024, I worked on an OWI, actually. And it kind of had all the things, we had to do a motion hearing for the stop, and that got dropped by the defense attorney, and then we had to take it to trial. The trial resulted in the driver having to, or the defendant having to have an IIE. So it was a complicated case, and I took it from the initial pre-trial all the way to trial.
And then lastly, do you have any final remarks, any information that you wish to share with us or any questions for us, the council?
Sure, I just want to, my dad sent me with a couple of...
Yeah, yeah.
So I just want to make sure, he wanted me to mention for sure that the city of Rowan had actually used him as special prosecutor before, as well as cases right now. In regards to the fee, our fee is $275 for all services. And I printed off all the cases that we had or that he was appointed for, for special prosecutor, I tend to pick them positive what they end up being, and a lot of them were contested, obviously. Uncotted cases can cost a lot less, but the average came out to about $450 per case that he's been appointed to.
Great.
And thank you for your considerations, thank you.
Thank you, yes, does, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Words?
I, I guess it's specific to him, but for this then, would you be coming, or would your dad, or is it just kind of take team?
We were thinking that we would do kind of take team.
Anybody else? No? All right, thank you, we do have closed session on here at the end of the night for us to... Yep, yep, so Jesse, I'm sure will be following up in the next, I'll be back tomorrow. Hopefully, we have a determination by then, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, of course.
Can you just holler at me kind of your way out?
I'll probably let you leave.
Yeah. Or you can leave, I mean, whatever.
We did also receive a proposal from the Tennessee law firm, and they did not show up in it, so. So again, we will go into closed session later after all this, then. We will move on to number seven, which is the election inspector poll worker appointments. The recommendation is to recommend to come and consult to approve and appoint the listed election inspectors presented from the January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2027. This is something that we have to do every other year, you can see election cycle is considered a two-year cycle. And the parties are asked to submit lists they're not required to. We did receive a list from the Democrat Party, we did not receive a list from the Republican Party. That's why you see the vast majority of our people that are on there listed as unaffiliated. So they have volunteered to be a poll worker, but they won't be representing either of the parties.
I'll make a motion to recommend the town council approval of the 2026, 2027 election inspectors.
Second. Motion by Sam, second by Misty, all on paper say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I have two final papers, sorry. Okay. Onto number eight is the 2025 budget amendments, recommendation is to discussion and action is appropriate.
So the budget amendment, as you heard from our audit earlier this year, by statute, we're not supposed to over expend what you guys approved for the budget. Therefore, if there's going to be any kind of over expenditure, it's a back to you for amendment of that audit. So I just want to set the stage that at the beginning, excuse me, last year, when you approved your budget for this year, there was a gap of $450,000 between what was anticipated for expenditures and what was anticipated for revenues. So what this does is basically kind of shore some of that up. So there's 159, a little more than 159,000 anticipated for revenue expenses. What happened in these cases are that we had more expenses anticipated, however, we get money in. For instance, the two here are building inspections, so those are, those fees are based on permits. And but when we issue a permit, the property owner pays for that. So there's plenty of, there's revenue that offsets our costs. So while it exceeded the budget, it's kind of a wash, okay? The transfers among expenditures on the budget, so these are, one place came in on where we anticipated it would be when we set the budget, so we're just reutilizing those funds to a different portion of the budget. So it won't impact the bottom dollar, but you need to know that it's been moved. And then the third category here are transfers impacting the budget, and these are ones that we're going to have to take from reserves as anticipated at this point. This number is just over $321,000, but as I remind you, we were looking at probably 450 when you set the budget. And some of these were not anticipated, like we talked about legal fees and things. So this is hopefully the final, however, we don't have all of the bills and things in fall, November, December at this point. So we may have to do a final shore up in January, which is pretty common for municipalities to do. So we tried, Devin and I went through and tried to anticipate, looking at other months' budgets or bills and things where we would have... So we tried, um, Devin and I went through and tried to anticipate looking at other months' budgets or bills and things where we would have that and put that in here already, but until we actually have everything in place. So it'll probably come back to you again in January, but we wanted to make sure that this is in place. So find for the auditors into so that you're aware of where we are. And you do get the um, monthly stuff, but this is a little easier to do the picture. So are there any questions or additional information that you'd like prior to uh, next week when this comes back for you? Or is, if you can, please.
I'm going to be the dumb person here.
Oh, no.
So when we borrowed for the budget shortfall.
Yes.
Is that not what we did and we already approved that? I'm trying to understand like why this is different to that.
That budget shortfall that we budgeted and got a loan for is for twenty twenty-six funding. This is twenty twenty-five spending. So when they approved the budget for this year, there was no attached loan. So the assumption is that the intention was to use reserve funds, your savings basically, to, to pay this.
Okay, thank you.
So. So not saying you won't have this situation now true, but hopefully it will be a lot closer to that, to that zero mark. Cause we don't have anticipated over purchase this time.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? You don't need anything from us, any kind of just.
Just a motion to send it to next week if you're comfortable.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the twenty twenty-five budget amendments to the county council.
I'll second.
Motion by Terri, second by Sam, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to number nine, the service provider agreement between the county of Green Lake and Berlin Emergency Medical Service.
As we discussed a bit previously, um, during the budget process, the um, EMS department has requested that we move from, uh, to the county that we move from um, general status under WRS to protected status, which is very common. Um, our um, police department has already entered the status. It's common to for fire and EMS. Um, so in doing so, we'll have additional costs for the WRS to discuss retirement system. Um, and then we've also suggested that perhaps our director come off of the regular rotation because he works um, the joint for our uh, rotation and then also does all the admin stuff. So we've requested that come to hire another paramedic so that we can focus on the admin stuff. So with that, um, we said that our budget shouldn't exceed two million, one hundred and ninety thousand.
One hundred and fifty thousand, thank you.
Should look instead of four hundred and fifty. Um, and so the contract that we have with the county has that number now listed within it. So what it says is that there won't ex, that the one point nine five is what they are planning to go out, uh, excuse me, so they are planning to assess for, um, budget for, levy for, sorry, levy for. Um, but that due to reserves and other such things, they understand that two point one two is what we could be anticipating, we could go up to. Hopefully, um, it won't be that high, but of course we have to plan for um, those scenarios because it um, is greatly impacted by what we get back um, from billings or, you know, depending on Medicaid, Medicare, insurance companies, all that kind of thing. Our hope is that during twenty twenty-six, um, we get a chance to actually go through this contract uh, a little more thoroughly and be a little more um, comfortable with the. But they have, there's no changes other than the dollar amounts from the previous year. But we're going to look at it with the county next year to see if it would get some stuff. Just to make it a little easier to control, I think, the. No, fair enough. Any questions or concerns regarding?
This isn't like the final official one, is it? Or is somebody going to proof it and fix it? Just about here.
If, if it went to the council, that's why I am saying that we are going to do it again next year.
Okay.
If there's something that you think changes what it means, I'll be know.
There was just like um, some lettering and wording in the middle here that didn't make sense. And then one of the dates wasn't actually a date. It was kind of their little letter L, eighth amendment, another letter L.
So I just wanted to.
I, I noted that.
Okay. Okay, so just wanted to make sure.
How does that make it clear?
Any other questions, gentlemen? The rest will just very much in the recommend to county council.
I'll make. Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend to county council to authorize city administrators sign the agreement funding authorized for an entire budget request of two million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars by county for EMS services.
Second, aye? Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten is the twenty twenty-six Berlin Senior Center Agreement with Green Lake County for the Berlin Senior Center Meal Site. The recommendation is to recommend to the county council to authorize the city administrator to sign agreement setting the meal reimbursement rate at seven dollars per meal, five days a week, excluding holidays.
So we've been working with the county for many, many years. Um, we actually have an employee that's part city, part county that comes that meal program. And um, as part of that meal program, the county does a bidding process to determine who will prepare the meals. And the city has had to bid for many, many years, um, and that bid goes through this year, or excuse me, twenty twenty-six. Um, with the dollar amount set at seven dollars, um, future, we will have to look at what makes sense moving forward. But for twenty twenty-six.
What is the meal at right now?
Six seventy?
Yes. Isn't that six seventy?
No, that is not what people pay, that's what they pay us.
That's what the county.
To prepare us, that's what the county reimburses us.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep. So this is something we review every year. I don't know.
Well, no.
The council should come every year. But the bid in the past has been multiple year. So I'm, I'm not sure when this, I know the previous bid runs through twenty twenty-six. I don't know when they go, if they go again, if it'll be for one, two, three, five years, I don't know. But if, then the city will have to determine if we wish to participate in the bid and what our bid would be.
Okay. Looking for motion on this one.
I have a question for the Berlin Senior Center.
Sue, you want to come up to the podium, please?
Sure.
And this is on me, Sue, because I missed your last meeting, which you probably would have explained it, but I was in another meeting at work. Um, can you tell me if this group that's supplying these meals, is that the same group that has received some complaints as far as like the people don't like the flavor of that or whatever, or?
No, actually, um, Deb, um, here is our cook.
Yep.
And she was out of work for a short period of time.
Right.
And at that time, they have received meals through a different party.
Okay.
And that I believe is.
Catering, the catering, yes.
Cause it was cater, yeah.
Right. And so this, yeah, not related, okay, then that was my question.
I bet changers love her cooking.
Yeah, I know, I do, yeah.
All right, thank you. That was a temporary agreement that the county had with a third party to, or basically what we were paying was new billers. So those meals could still be provided because we didn't have any food in preparation for, for a time.
Right. Rest in peace. Yep. I'll make a motion to recommend the county council authorizing the city administrators sign the twenty twenty-six Berlin Senior Center Arena on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Victoria, second by Missy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven is the twenty twenty-six transportation services agreement with Green Lake County. Recommendation is to recommend to the county council to authorize city administrator to sign the agreement setting a contract amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
Again, this is the annual contract the county gets, um, grant funding that they are able to then, um, distribute to allow, um, county residents to get rides through our testing package. Sue has more familiarity with than I do.
Does anybody have any questions? Now, these um, trips have to stay in city limits or do these go outside of?
They go outside of Berlin. Um, in the past, from what I've just had a chance to review, um, I think Appleton's probably our furthest that we've taken. Um, I just had a meeting with Ryan Amber from Green Lake County yesterday morning. And he filled me in a little bit about the transfer, uh, transportation program. Um, the very first um, order of business with that program is that it is used for the meals on wheels. Um, secondary would be for medical appointments. However, this transportation has taken them to Walmart or grocery shopping or whatever the case may be. Um, you know, foodie of our appointments, whatever, whatever need they might have. Um, so we take them, we're trying to narrow it down to about a forty-five mile radius, but that's still in the works.
And that's only five days a week.
It is five days a week and it is from eight AM to four PM.
And how many beds?
Just one, just one.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion on this one as well.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the county council authorizing the city administrator to sign the twenty twenty-six transportation services agreement on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Terri, here you go. Hey, you see what I did there? Motion by Terri, second by Victoria, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve is a specially meant permit process discussion. Recommendation is discussion and action is appropriate.
So what if there was a rivalry, the different sections of code that lay out how um, different permits are specified for and approved? There's been some confusion as to when things require council approval, when things require committee approval and when it's just staff approval. For the most part, um, a lot of things by ordinance say that um, it can be staff approval, especially if it is a repeated event. Um, some things do require it to go to council, at least for the, for the initial uh, review. There are very, very few things that actually by ordinance go to the park and rec committee. It actually says that if you wish to utilize a park facility, the park director is supposed to review your application, put out within ten days and give you a um, approval or denial. And that you can then go to the park and rec committee if you wish to review that. The caveat to that is if animals are going to get the rent. So petting zoo or animal ride, I don't know, whatever.
It's been doing a long time.
Would bring, you know, donkey, sporting events, whatever, um, that would require um, the park or our commission. So since this is what is laid out in the ordinance, our plan moving forward for staff is to follow the ordinance. So if you don't think that this is an appropriate level of review or process, then we need to look at changing the ordinance. So I just wanted to bring that forward too, since it really hasn't been done this way for some time. Um, and make you aware of this and then we also will have to let the park and rec committee know, or commission, excuse me, know um, that most things will just receive staff approval or denial and then come to them. Of course, if somebody is um, asking for appeal or if it is an animal, they lose an event, um, otherwise they would just get a list of what has been approved. So that they're aware of what's going on in the parks.
Okay, so just like a monthly, okay, if these were things that were approved, it would be under, under.
Yeah, it is an report.
Sure, go with them, go to them. Yeah.
Um. I also thought it would be a good idea, uh, updating the website. Making sure that it's easy um, for the public to find. You know, whether it's a ladder or, you know, designing something where it's easy, this one needs to go here, I need this form, these people need to okay it or whatever, just to make sure that it's easy for the public to understand.
I will have to work on that.
Have to work on something with that.
That makes sense.
I do agree though, sorry, Victoria, I, I do agree though that I think there's been a lot of confusion over the years and frustration over why did this group have to go here and this one was just approved and this, I do like it and we had an ordinance that outlined it, so.
The only thing that I would ask, um, it does say for several of them that if it's a repeat event unless there's a significant change, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as to what that means. In, in my eyes, that would mean like if it's prepared to make a route change or potentially if they completely changed the time of year, like it was always a fall event and now they're going to do it in the spring. Or if they're changing, like it was a two-hour event and now it's all day, you know, something like that. Otherwise, so, but what do you envision, well, need to come back for.
I mean, cause we just asked, we just in, I think it was in the Parks and Recs, Parks and Recs that changed. And Victoria, you would know this more, that, that you guys specifically, or maybe it wasn't you guys that did it, but specifically asked these reoccurring groups that instead of it just happens every year that they were asking them to, can you like at least come back and touch base with us? Right, like you just wanted to, updates on, I mean, that just happened in the last year.
Yeah, there was some kickback, um, because we were asking for a timeframe to be set to say like, instead of it going on in perpetuity, that maybe every five years you come back. And then the kickback was like, well, this group is on five years and this group's on this five years. Now we have to track like, oh, in twenty fourteen, you're up. And so there was a kickback from staff on having to track that to send them back um, to the park and rec for their approval. But I know that Park and Rec did enjoy being able to hear what was going on and how it was affecting the city and how it was affecting the parks. My one kickback, if any, about this process is that. And help me to understand, it sounds like what we're saying is that staff is going to approve everything and just provide a list to the boards, is that correct?
When it comes to park and rec materials, yes. And I, I gave you the, the ordinance. So basically it says, you have ten days to respond, um, to approve or deny. And then they could, of course, if it was denied, come to the park and rec commission and ask them to, to hear their, to hear their case on if it's an animal, um, event, so it comes to the park and rec commission automatically. So if you want, we can, you guys can do whatever you want, just, all right.
And this is finally voicing to change the.
Right, I'm only voicing my thoughts because we've had some controversial decisions by staff in the past that then Park and Rec and county council argued for. And. Yeah, I, I think if we keep it in the ordinance that they can refute or appeal to the board, um, does then the board decision override staff decision?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
That would be my only concern is that we have a person of a very strong political leaning, either left or right, refusing or accepting things that are of their particular political flavor in um, the park and rec environment, but not allowing others or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Um, that we have the board to fall back on for those.
Yeah, so that's why we need to exclude us, yeah, it's just, yeah. And, and this is where Jesse was asking, I mean, this is the time if we think, because again, she, and I think this is also going with our attorney to making sure that we're following our ordinances. And if we have ordinances in here that we're not even following, what's applied.
Right.
So this was, I think, one of those where, okay, we, hey, look, we do have one here and it outlines it just fine. Uh, that we probably should have been following it along, but whatever.
Yeah.
So if, if we see issues or we think something should be tweaked, now is the time to, to figure that out or bring in those issues. I would um. I would say a lot of those reoccurring ones, I think that they would appreciate. I did see both sides, Victoria, especially when they would, they were asked to come back, like we'll use ABC group, for example, the trees in the park, it hasn't changed. It's the same thing every year. I think it was just the respect of, hey, you have a Parks and Rec committee, let them have a hand in it. Um, but I can also see like, here, okay, here we are again, yep, it's still the trees, we're still.
Yeah.
So I do see both sides, I think is a worse piece.
And I think they wanted to give him um, multiple years, but again, there was pushback on that.
Yeah.
So I think if we can do that, you know, ten-day approval, within ten days approval, and then if he wants to come before Park and Rec to talk about what they're doing. and then if he wants to come before Park and Rec to talk about what they're doing, then that's great.
Or any changes. If anything, like you said, gets changed, use the homecoming rate, for example. They decide to change the route, well, then that one's going to have to be discussed.
Sure. Was there anything that you were thinking would be significant that I didn't match? I just want to make sure, you know, I don't want it to be surprises, obviously, that's something to interpretation, but if I can understand your interpretation, it makes sense.
Well, I, I just see the like sidewalk cafes, like, isn't that part of, don't we approve that with liquor licenses?
We do.
So, does that, would that want to be different then? Like, or will that still happen on the same calendar, same timeframe as those things? Or is that something now that you guys would, or are these different, I mean?
I, I think we can still approve them with their liquor licenses, we just have to note that it's a sidewalk, and then we wouldn't approve all of those things, if that makes sense.
I didn't know if like, you would have a different schedule now for those, or just being that it's listed out, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Well, if somebody wanted to apply outside of their liquor license time period, they could still come forward to you guys if it's their initial, their initial one.
So, then I'm assuming the educational piece will happen from staff to Park and Rec, or to the different commissions, just to kind of say this is how things are going to roll going forward, according to our established ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the, that's the plan, is to bring everybody up to speed, and then if they do have concerns and feel that that process was different, then they should let you guys know that, as their representative, and if you choose to, you can change the ordinance, if you feel it's appropriated as is, that's great too.
So, we don't really need any action on this, right?
You do not, unless you want staff to, if you want staff to initiate something, otherwise, we will move forward with particularly Park and Rec Commission. There's not a lot of others that really review permits that I can think of offhand, besides you guys. So, we will make sure that they're aware of what the ordinance actually says, and that our plan is to notify them of what events that are approved and are coming up, so.
Makes sense. Okay. Alright, on to number thirteen, municipal code chapter fifty-four, Waste and Recycling Amendment.
So, there are two reasons for this amended. First, we've been discussing for some, some time with the process that for twenty twenty-seven, we anticipate putting in a fee separate from the levy on tax rule to cover recycling. So, the ordinance needs to be tweaked in order to do that. The second thing is that the state has updated what is required of our recycling ordinance, and that has to be approved, I believe, someday in April. So, thought was, or you could be a journey to just do this one time, instead of approving the changes we need for one, then going back and doing it again. So, if the council is okay with the version that you have in front of you, I would plan to send that to the DNR, just to make sure that if they have any concerns, or don't feel that you've met the requirements, that you can get that adjusted prior to adoption. Again, we would have to have this replaced prior to next year's budget, and prior to April. So, we're not in a huge rush, but I want to give the DNR some time, if they're willing to take a peek at it at a time, and then hopefully, it probably won't come back next week. Just because I'm not asking that somebody's going to be able to do that quickly, but within the next month or two, I hope it'd be that brings back for your, for your final review.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, we're looking for a motion on this one. If anybody doesn't have questions. I'll make a motion to recommend the common council to approve amendments of municipal code chapter fifty-four Waste and Recycling, to bring the code into compliance with the DNR requirements, and allow a recycling fee to be placed on future tax bills following the ordinance being sent to the DNR for review. What's second to that? Motion by Victoria, second by Terri, all on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to number fourteen, the twenty twenty-six standardized special assessment schedule. Recommendation is to recommend to common council to accept the city engineer's recommendation to update the twenty twenty-six standardized special assessment schedule as presented.
This is an annual occurrence. If you have any questions or concerns, I can certainly take them back to the engineer prior to next, next week.
Oh, is this the same as, no, this is the one.
Yep, definitely.
It's just the one with age.
Just the one. I apologize, I should have put out there papers a little slowly, but.
I was just going to point out the changes for this one, so.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to recommend the common council to accept and approve the city engineer's recommendation on the updated twenty twenty-six standardized special assessment schedule.
Second. Motion by Sam, second by Missy, all on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen is amend the City of Berlin Building and Zoning Fee Schedule. The recommendation is to recommend the common council approval of the amended City of Berlin Building and Zoning Fee Schedule recommended. And it looks like there's only the change to, the one that's been residential and commercial buildings. Otherwise, that's the only change, correct?
Yes.
So, that's another.
I'll make a motion to recommend the common council approval of the amended City of Berlin Building and Zoning Fee Schedule as recommended by the City of Berlin Building Inspector.
I'll second that. Motion by Sam, second by Terri, all on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, I really don't like office hours. Number sixteen, tax increment district number seventeen, vacant lot development incentive program. The recommendation is discussion and action as appropriate.
So, as we've discussed a few times, the council is interested in putting together an incentive program for single-family and duplex homes within the ten seventeen district, within the tax increment district number seventeen. You, as a council, approved ten seventeen, or excuse me, this year. However, it has to go to the state and through all the approval processes as well, that currently will be that ten, and I would anticipate that we would receive approval in the first quarter of this coming year. Ten fifteen was the year before we raised approval. So, that's my anticipation, so none of this would be utilized until it's fully approved. However, just wanted to ensure, thought on this is basically a template of a development agreement with anyone who would wish to build a home, or do fast hire a single lot. If someone were wished for doing like a developer of multiple, like if you're, you know, you do a much larger than a single home, we would probably not do a bunch of these, but we do a single development agreement, just like we did in ten fifteen, we did the development agreement for the apartment complex at this point. But this is intended for, to help with those single-family and duplex individual lots. So, this program basically would say that you could get up to ten thousand dollars back over a three-year period after your bill that would be fifty percent reimbursement of the increment that you created. So, it depends how valuable the home that you build is, and then for three years with a max of ten thousand, or if it's a duplex, twenty thousand. That's, that's.
And we've talked about this, right?
Yes.
Feels like forever, but.
There's one little piece that we haven't talked about before, that I'm looking for your guidance on. When our city attorney drafted this, he put in there a requirement to have a letter of credit. So, that's incredibly common in development agreements to require a letter of credit, so that if something goes wrong, or isn't completed as anticipated, there's money sitting there that the city can draw upon to complete the project, or at least to get things going in the right direction. I asked him to remove that from this agreement for a couple of reasons. One, a letter of credit costs money, you've got to take that out with a bank, and then you have to have it funded through the term of this, of this agreement. So, I'm not sure that this would really be an effective incentive tool if for a maximum that you're going to get being ten thousand dollars, that you have to put money towards securing that. However, it does provide another layer of security for the city, and I completely understand why the city, if you put it in there, it's incredibly common. But most development agreements are for more than ten thousand dollars. Normally, you're talking about a larger development, right? So, this is a policy of the city. Do you feel that you need that layer for, for the city protection? Or do you feel that it should be as incentivizing as possible? So, obviously, there's no necessarily right or wrong answer with that.
Well, with this particular program design, they can't start recouping any of that money until the project is built, so.
Absolutely.
They're not really out of money.
I would agree.
If they don't build, you just have a bank at lot.
Right, and it's one, instead of like, an apartment building that gets a third of the way through and stuff. I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just telling you, you know, for why that developed, why that letter of credit is a guarantee, has a lot of times required. This is a single-family home, and when you do it, when you do a single-family home build now, you're not required to have a letter of credit to back up that, that project. However, this is different in that it's, you know, you could receive some of the money that you were paying for the taxes back, as an incentive. So, like I said, not necessarily a right or wrong answer, I'm just not sure how incentivizing it is if you have to take out a letter of credit to get it.
I would say to take it out.
It's not in there now.
Okay.
But you have to draft it, and you can put it right back in.
I would keep it out, and I, you're not going to get the money until it's a complete build, and we can't get the land for it anyways if it's just vacant, so.
Yeah. And I will note, when I suggested that, he said, absolutely, it's out, let me know what their policy decision is, and we'll move forward. So, he's not saying, wasn't like, he was not, he's not on that stuff. Whatever he feels the proper policy, he'll write it to the best of that portion.
I definitely was leaving it out.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
We don't need any motion on that one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you just asked you to push it forward to my next meeting. I'll make a motion to recommend the common council approval of the template development agreement for single-family and duplex single-home projects to be utilized for the tax increment district number seventeen, vacant lot development incentive program.
I'll second. Motion by Terri, second by Victoria, all on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, on to number seventeen, the twenty twenty-six shared ride taxi grant application, and recommendation is recommend the common council to authorize staff to apply for the twenty twenty-six Wisconsin DOT public transit assistance program, PTAP, and DOT capital public transit assistance program and operating signatures. Should have just narrowed that one.
Correct, so this is an annual thing that we apply for that pays a significant portion of our shared taxi contract that we have. So, we need to get this submitted sooner or later. So, that's why it is on for both the discussion, and then under table, and then immediately following our regular meeting, having a regular meeting to allow the approval of this to be submitted.
And also, just to note in here that the city will also be applying for capital systems to cover eighty percent of the cost of replacing a van.
Yes, that's our, that's our plan. So.
Which is a handy hack accessible van. So, what if you're replacing one of the old ones?
So, these, these vans are for the shared ride taxi, not the seniors' kind.
Right, right.
Correct.
Yep.
Actually, the one that the contractor has suggested is called a Starlight. It's a different, it's not actually, again, it's more like a mini bus, but they are not utilizing it much at all, because it just doesn't meet their needs. So, the thought would be to replace that with a handy hack accessible van with rear entry.
Just right, now we only have one.
There's supposed to be three vehicles, but.
Um, wheelchair accessible.
Oh, thank you.
There's only, I mean, there's two, that, the second one we never use as a wheelchair van, which we've asked, we looked into before, but that's not it.
So, my hope is that if we do that, if we get the grant.
So, this would be two working wheelchair transit vans, then.
That's my understanding, but I will have to verify that with our.
Because not in the community is a, is a slump pickings for somebody who uses it quite a bit. There's often a wait for it, so.
It's an eighty percent grant, so we're very hopeful. The anticipated cost is around eighty thousand, but by the time it gets ordered, we'll see. So, we're gonna, with the council's approval, of course, apply for for that eighty percent to purchase the van, and then the residents for operating from.
So, it's replacing that big one you said?
I don't know.
Boss type van, Starlight.
They really don't, from what I understand, even if it just doesn't meet their needs, it's, I'm understanding.
And then why, is my question, oh, there's only one van then, that's transporting wheelchair accessible. Does the unused van then get sold, or?
That would be my assumption at this point. It'll take a little bit more research to determine if it was purchased with grant funds, because that is a different process than if it wasn't purchased with grant funds, because then depending on how much you get, it's got to go back to the state, you know, they funded the majority of it to start. So, then it'll take a little bit of research, but we'll get that squared away.
I have more questions on that one, sorry, I'm running on that one.
Okay, but are we okay with applying?
Yeah, yeah, I just have some concerns, but we need to make sure that we are utilizing all the vehicles that we have though.
Okay.
That are, especially if we only have one wheelchair van that is accessible right now. Why we're not using the other ones, or why, is it staffing issues, or is it mechanical issues, or?
Is Starlight mini bus wheelchair accessible at all?
That's what you.
I'm not certain.
Oh, I was assuming that it was.
It would be replaced with a handy hack accessible van.
Okay.
So, moving forward.
I was thinking, sorry, that I misunderstood, I was thinking that it was.
I'm not 100% sure on that.
I don't.
I don't, I don't know for sure on that, but
Okay.
the replacement that we are requesting would be a handy hack accessible van.
And then I would ask, what, you said it's a rear entry one?
That's what they suggested.
Because the other wheelchair accessible van that we have, we don't utilize as a wheelchair accessible van. We purchased it specifically for that, and I don't think it worked out like they wanted to, and so we don't use it as a wheelchair van, which is disappointing. So, I just want to make sure that whatever one we get is meant, and it's fits the needs, so that I can use as that.
Okay.
So, we need a motion on that one as well.
I'll make a motion to recommend the common council to authorize staff to apply for the twenty twenty-six Wisconsin DOT public transit assistance program, and DOT capital public transit assistance program, and authorize the needed signatures.
I'll second that. Motion by Victoria, second by Terri, all on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'm looking for a motion to amend a close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties invested in public funds or conducting others to specify public business when our competitive and bargaining reasons require a full session. And this is for consideration of candidates and terms of conditions to be appointed, to be appointed city municipal court attorney contract. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Victoria, second by Missy, roll call to close.
Hill. Aye. Sorenson.
Aye.
Stubby.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Prisbo.
Aye.
Neighbor.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll go into closed. Can we take a quick?
Yeah, we can take a quick break.